Welcome to the Central Texas College Board of Trustees Regular Meeting for March 28, 2023. The invocation today will be led by Reverend Towers, I pledge allegiance by trustee Bebe, and I'll lead the Texas pledge.
Please join me in whatever form of faith you have as I want for a prayer to my God. Father in heaven, thank you for this day, for the beauty of it, beauty represented by faces in this room, people committed to this institution. Thank you for the privilege you've given us to be administrators, to be directors, to be trustees. Bless us, we might be a blessing to someone else today, I pray in Christ's name. Amen.
Please join me in the pledge. Honor the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as our own. Please join me in honoring the Texas flag. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to Texas, one nation under God, one and indivisible. Still almost unmanageable. We have a forum president today, and this meeting has been recorded. Members of the public may access this meeting through the Central Texas College website. Item two, our agenda is to consider approval of minutes of regular meeting in the Board of Trustees held on February 28, 2023. Copy has been provided in your read ahead.
Slow move.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve the minutes from February 28, 2023. Is any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, ask for a vote. All who are in favor say aye. Motion carries. Item number three is the chairman's update. Now, I'm meaning for members of the public to suggest additional topics for discussion or to address topics of interest for the presentation limited in three minutes. Is there anyone present who would like to address the board? Seeing none, we'll move on to item number four, which is the chancellor's report.
Thanks, sir. First item is Net Impact. Dr. Bach, you want to come share Net Impact with us and introduce your guests?
Certainly. It is my great pleasure to introduce to you Dr. Chastity Clemmons, who is a professor of business and is also the faculty advisor for Net Impact, which is a national organization whose very admirable mission is to inspire and equip emerging leaders to build a more just and sustainable world. Dr. Clemmons is going to tell you about a recent very special project in which they were engaged, and we will introduce you to some students.
First off, thank you so much for having us today. Really excited to announce that our Net Impact chapter, we hosted the Up to Us program in the fall, and we were placed top five in the nation. We are the only community college in the top 10, but we were placed in top five, and I always like to say we beat Notre Dame. The purpose of that project is that the students were having to educate those on campus and in the community about fiscal policies and also the national debt, and to make them not only aware, but also to reach out to our state representatives, to also engage them in when they're making decisions to consider our fiscal policies and the national debt according to their generation. With us today, I have two of the three students that had the opportunity. So everybody that participated in the Up to Us, all the universities and colleges, had the opportunity to write an essay on leadership and how leadership, how they led with leadership and what they could learn from the Leadership Conference in Washington, DC. And then they handpicked just a few. We were so lucky that all three of ours that applied got chosen, and they got an all-expense-paid trip to Washington, DC to attend the bipartisan event for Up to Us, and they were able to learn a lot more about how to be a better leader in their community, as well as our president, being that we were top five, got an all-expense-paid trip to Nashville to be part of the Clinton Initiative with Bill Clinton, Hillary Clinton, and Chelsea Clinton.
Thank you, Dr.
Thank you.
You have a couple of questions, board members?
Yeah, how about introducing your students?
Yeah.
Okay. If our Danielle? Danielle Sleet, I forgot, I probably just been. And then Christina Stropin.
She always does a great job with our Net Impact students and placing nationally, so.
I just got one question for the students.
Yes, sir.
You discussed the national debt. Were you for it or against it?
I'd say against with how much it is.
And there are some, there are some events going on, so Dr. Adie, if you would get with whoever and get those dates and share those with us, I think they're on campus, so we can, some of us can attend, somebody in the audience might want to come, so thank you. Next item is introduction. Dr. Delion, Dr. Adie.
Good afternoon again. It is my pleasure to introduce to you Dr. John Delion, who started on the first of March as the new dean for service area, adult and workforce education. And Dr. Delion replaced Hassan Dawson, left in January. Dr. Delion has 30 years of experience in higher education to include working with academic, career technical, and non-credit programs in the role of dean, vice president, and various other roles, leadership roles. He primarily worked at community colleges in Texas and surrounding states. Dr. Delion has served as department chair and has taught in higher education for over 13 years. It is certainly a pleasure to have Dr. Delion on board. We were traveling the service area over the past couple of weeks, and so it was nice to spend time together and really get to know your employee better. Dr. Delion, you want to share anything?
Well, thank you so much for the introduction. I just want to state that I have been in this business for 30-plus years. I started when I was very young, 15, and it's been quite a journey. But the journey has led me here, and I am excited to be here. This is my fourth week, and I can say with all honesty, I've only worked three out of those four weeks because we were off for spring break. So, thank you also very much.
A couple more great things from Dr. Delion to kickstart that service area and the prison and all those things back up, so he will, we'll see more of him as the months roll on. Okay. Texas Pathways, Dr. Adie and Dr. Garrett.
Good afternoon again. So, we have two presentations we would like to make, one to Professor Anilia Fairfield. She is professor of developmental studies and communications, and also Professor Ella Falkenstein, who is professor of developmental studies on the math side. Over the past five years in every community college in Texas, the Texas Pathway strategy has been implemented and scaled to increase the number of students who reached, who reached their end goal and a good career with living wages. Professors Falkenstein and Fairfield have been leading the efforts for CTC and Texas Pathways by attending the conferences, preparing coordinating activities related to pathways, and leading positive institutional change. And we would like to present both of the faculty members with certificates of appreciation, and Dr. Garrett will share what it says on those.
So, Alan, in recognition of your significant contributions as the Texas Pathways lead, mapping pathways to student end goals, helping students choose and enter program pathways, keeping students on path, and ensuring students are learning all while providing CTC direct sustained support, implementing the statewide four pillars of essential practices strategy resulting in tangible, coherent, systematic institutional change. Thank you very much for your service to Texas Pathways, to Central Texas College. Doctorie?
I'm me too, wait.
And to Anilia Fairfield, in recognition of your significant contributions as Texas Pathways lead, providing direct sustained support, implementing the statewide four pillars of essential practices strategy resulting in tangible, coherent, systematic institutional change, including mapping pathways to student end goals, helping students choose and enter a program pathway, and keeping students on path, ensuring students are learning, and also, from my standpoint, herding the cats, getting us all there and doing whatever was necessary to keep us on track. So, thank you very much, Madam.
Group shot. I want to thank Dr. Adie and Dr. Garrett for their leadership in getting us through pathways and keeping us on track and working that. It's been tremendous. We were kind of floundering for a while, and then we jumped into it with all four feet because there's two of you, and you've made this happen, so thank you. Okay, pictures on the mind. First one is Dr. Garrett. Sorry, had to get up.
We had an amazing event on March 3 on campus. It was a professional development event. This, we brought in a speaker, a nationally renowned speaker, and this was supported by a grant that Dean Julie Starkey obtained to promote student success and persistence. The money from the grant is divided between three areas, my area, Dr. Adie's area, and Dr. Carter's area, and the focus is to be sure that it helps students persist and complete the work at Central Texas College. Denard Mitchell was an amazing speaker. We were hoping to bring him back in other areas. He brought life to the student services area. The comments that these, the student services personnel made were, they've never experienced that kind of professional development, and they walked away with a new sense of what they can do to help students persist. Some of the things he brought to us were about, you know, juggling. We are all juggling, and it seems like we're always just trying to catch the ball that's about to fall. And he gave us some hints and things to do to recognize what other people bring to the table and how you can assist them through your own internal knowledge of how you operate as maybe a dolphin, or an octopus, or a shark, or what was the other one? The clownfish, thank you, thank you. And, and the, one of the things that he did say is to come full, come to work full, and that's what that second screen is. It's all about coming to work full, what you could do before you come to work so that you are on full to help the students persist and move forward. He did give away $100 right at the beginning to get everybody's attention, and you can see in the, in the upper corner there, Rosa Paredes was the one that won that. He played a game and got everybody engaged, and he did other things that promoted a lot of teamwork throughout the session. He was amazing. He was here for over three hours, and everybody enjoyed it tremendously.
Thank you, Dr. Garrett. We're looking forward to his next visit, or more of the same, in our development. Dr. Carter, next picture.
Good afternoon, everyone. This past Thursday, I talked about it last week, but this past Thursday, we had the Women's History Month annual event, and I say annual because according to the chancellor, it is the first but not the last. And it, the, the panel featured, as I mentioned last week, are four of our esteemed department chairs. Just to give you some numbers, again, nine of the 14 department chairs are women, and four of them participated in last week's presentation, and two were from the career technical education side of the house and two from the academic side of the house. So, I'll focus on the center picture, and standing between me and the chancellor are Dr. Andrea Fosquet, Department Chair for Science and Agriculture, Dr. Tracy Cook, Social and Behavioral Science, Dr. Catherine Oser, Computer Information, and Dr. Melissa Gonzalez, Office Technology. So for approximately an hour and a half, we used several questions to prompt some very stimulating conversation, meaningful and impactful conversation with an audience present. The event was also live streamed, and it's now available on YouTube for those of you who were not able to attend. And so we heard from their perspectives and their experiences how to navigate the sometimes challenging but extremely rewarding career in higher education. They shared with us their why, and while wearing many hats and doing this, you know, their mothers, their spouses, they are, their mentors, and yet they, they managed to do it all. And it was evident during that conversation, as we leaned in to listen to them, it was evident that they are also friends. It just fell out that way, you know? They, they volunteered to participate, turned out they were friends, and if you were there and if you had a chance to listen to it, watch YouTube, you can see that I think sometimes they didn't even remember that we were in the room. You know, so I moderated the event, but there were times they didn't need me, so picking back right off of one another. So it was very organic, very authentic, very, very good. Some of the comments included, I mentioned that the chancellor said this will be an annual event, so it will be so. Dean Fisher, he commented that the messaging had something for everyone in attendance, regardless of gender and role here at the college, and I think he's absolutely right. At one point, I asked a question with regard to the, the subject at that time resonating with anyone in the audience, and the firsthand that went up was a man, you know? So, it transcended the gender and, and like he said, the role at the institution. Dr. Stephen Salvato, a CTC faculty member, said he found the conversation with our department chairs both educational and inspiring, so there was something for everyone. So if you weren't able to attend, I do encourage you to tune into the CTC YouTube channel and hear what these awesome, awesome women had to share with us.
Thank you, Dr. Carter. I appreciate all the hard work you did for a most powerful and inspiring session, and we're looking forward to something similar next year. Maybe a little different, but, but we'll have something, yeah. Yeah, and I, I want to thank Chairman Weaver and Bobby Weaver for attending, but we'll try to get the word out better than we did this time. We're working on that. So, next picture is Lori Forsythe.
Hi there, I'm Dr. Forsythe. I'm here in the stead of my supervisor, Dr. Tammy Samorefa, and our fourth semester nursing students as part of-
Our Forsythe needs to get, they're going to record you.
Oh, they are, dear. They didn't tell me about that when they asked me to come. Anyway, I'm here in the stead of Dr. Samorefa, who's our department chair, and who you're looking at is some of our fourth semester associate degree nursing students. And this was a project that their instructors, who unfortunately were not able to be here today, Professor Sandra Brown and Professor Jerica Josie, as part of their leadership class, wanted them to have the opportunity to, to do a presentation, and this prepares them both for a leadership role if they were to present a topic at like a nursing conference, or whether or not just to be able to give good patient and family teaching. So they have quite a variety of topics. Some of them are social media, effects on mental health, stress relief, techniques for healthcare workers, diabetes information. One is hypertension, and because I'm an old nurse of heart, too, I made some copies of that handout for you guys. You can pass that around if you'd like to keep a copy of that. And it's on hypertension as far as ways of lowering your blood pressure, which we all could probably benefit from doing. Also, the, the group in the lower middle did a, did a presentation on vaccines, and those of us with the gray here probably remember days when we didn't have some of the vaccines for some of our childhood illnesses, like polio, or measles, or diptheria, and so forth. And if we didn't go through that, our parents or grandparents did. And it gave some of the other students and even younger faculty the opportunity to see what it was like to actually experience having some of those illnesses that many of our students have not lived through. Also, another presentation was on cultural competence. Anyway, there was quite a variety of topics, and the students all had the opportunity to pick the topic themselves, something that they were passionate about, and to present to whoever came by, whether or not it was fellow faculty or students and so forth. They all presented quite professionally. When I first showed up to work that morning, I thought, we had guests. I didn't realize they were our students, even though I had taught all of them. They looked quite different and really presented themselves very professionally, and I think we can be very proud of, of what we're producing here in the nursing program as far as both leaders in healthcare and just great patient advocates who will be able to teach others. So, anyway, hope you enjoyed learning a little bit about what they're doing, and we were very proud of our students.
Thank you, Dr. Forsythe. And we all need nurses, right? So, keep those going, and if you haven't attended any of the penings or the graduations, please, please do so. Dr. Clemmons, I think you're on next. Is there another picture? Yep, there we go.
Awesome. So, you know, I'm into bragging about us. So I have been on the national or the board here at First National Bank for Lemonade Day for 11 years. And so Lemonade Day, if you're not familiar with, it started in 2007 by Michael Holtman, and he did it because his daughter wanted a turtle, and he said, no, we have too many pets. And so she decided to rebel and start a lemonade stand and raise her own money and buy her own turtle. And that gave him the idea of our youth really need that entrepreneurship training. And so that continued into now being a not only national but international program. So here at Fordhead and Colleen, they adopted it, and we became Lemonade Day 11 years ago. Well, Lemonade University, so what we do is the first weekend in May is actually Lemonade Day. Up to that point, the board then comes up with ideas like build a stand, build a logo and so forth, get the kids ready for Lemonade Day weekend. So Lemonade Day University was introduced about five, six years ago, and university Mary Hart and Baylor got the rights to it. They didn't do so well. So it came back to us at the board, and I said, hey, I've got these wonderful students, let us get a chance to do it. And they're like, well, you guys can volunteer. So we did that for a couple of years. We got a new city director, and I said, again, this is crazy, it's a university, we're teaching these kids a college atmosphere type of training, it should be at CTC. So we are so happy to announce this is the first year we were able to bring it to CTC. We had Lemonade University March 4. The college students actually were the professors. They did the whole entire planning. I turned it into a curriculum for my BMGT 2370 and 71 course, so they had to literally come up with cost analysis, the curriculum, the entire event. It started out with the kids coming in, and they got welcomed to what an entrepreneur is, and then they got broke off into classrooms where they learned according to their age what it could become an entrepreneur and how to start a lemonade stand. From there, we fed them lunch, Chick-fil-A, and then after that, they went to PEs, which we called Practical Education. We had Professor Feeney come and teach them how to make a lemonade stand from a pallet, and then one of our students, who is our VP of Marketing, taught them about logo creation for the older kids. The younger kids, we had one of the culinary club, Ms. Shalonda, come in and teach them about health and safety on preparing foods, and we actually had them make lemonade by using a lemon, sugar packets, and water. And I would tell you, they actually did a protest. They wanted more sugar than we gave them, and they all together, and these are up to six-year-olds, decided to protest and hit the table and say, we want sugar for like 20 minutes. And then it was over, and said it done, and one of them stood up and said, you do know that we won that protest. And then after the PEs, we did actual graduation, you can see in the picture, where the students wore a graduation gown, I wore mine, and we gave them a certificate and a graduation hat, and they then graduated and left. But we were so excited that the bank was actually, this past board meeting, they were so blown away, was the exact words of the VP, was blown away by what we did. So I wanted to share with you what we're doing in that impact. This is one of our many projects.
She has a lot of them. Thank you, Dr. Clemmons, and keep us in mind, next year, let us know ahead of time. Dr. Adie, let us know so we, maybe we'll show up with our captain gown on. Yeah, okay. Bill Kirchner, next picture. Bill, come on. Spring break, safety awareness. What, there you are.
Good afternoon. I'm William Kirchner, Department Chair, Industrial Technology, and Diesel Professor. As you can see right here, and in the past, I brought to your attention that we were going to embed Kubota Tech into our curriculum already. As you can see, we've already had two graduating, a total of nine students in Kubota Tech for engines and pre-delivery inspections. We followed the curriculum that National Coalition NC3 has given us guidelines, and then we added more into it, get more in depth, and we're reaching out to our local industry partners dealing with Kubota, WC Tractor, E-Walt, Moore Kubota, and they are reaching out wanting our students before they complete the certificate to get hired on board. We've made arrangements where they can work part-time, but they're still going to be students, and then once they receive their certifications, eight of them, then they can turn around and go out there and work. They're offering around $20 an hour for a student to be part-time, and hours that what the student would wish. Right now, we have a demand out there, and we're trying to fill it, but not too fast. We want our students to at least complete their certificates and then go out there and work in the industry.
What's the closest location?
Right now, WC is in Belton or Temple, it's on exit 297, and it's right there, and then we have E-Walt in Georgetown, if you're going down to the shopping outlet stores, and they're right there, and you're looking as well. Any questions?
Thank you, Bill.
Thank you.
These are the kind of programs we need more of, and, and we've got this one going, we've got the Ford program, and there's other things coming, so again, thank you, and thank Dr. Adie and Dr. Bach, thank for all of your efforts to get these things going. Yeah, tremendous. Next picture. Mr. Harmson.
As, if you remember, several years ago, we had worked on several signage projects across campus. One of them that we had talked about was the Central Texas College and Clear Creek entrance, where we have the little bell tower as well as the large letter, Central Texas College. I think during that conversation, we had talked about possibly doing something on the south side over by the tennis courts, over by Advent and the Hemingway Building entrance. We decided that it would give us a little bit better visibility to shift some of the letters that were created by the grounds department over to the bridge over on the west part of campus so that you could see the letters when you come up through Cove. And so we had been contemplating what we could do, particularly with our in-house, working with the welding shop, the faculty and the students there. And so we were able to go ahead and come up with this monument. You've got some large limestone blocks in the back, limestone edging, and then the welding shop was able to produce a, actually two stainless steel eagles. One is at this particular entrance, the second one is going to be put up in the mall. We have a general idea, but we're, we're working through some of the details there. The sign was actually cut out through a plasma cutter, I believe, through the welding department. And then our building maintenance department actually went ahead and painted the sign, and then they worked to go ahead and construct it, mount it on the wall. The majority of it was actually done in-house, either between the welding department or facilities. We had a little bit of help with the concrete pad and then some of the electrical, but I think it really goes to show the, the great work and the talent that we have within the college to be able to produce some, some excellent products.
Is anybody seen those?
Yeah. It is light. So if you come in in the evening hours, you will see it really nicely visible when you're coming right down Bell Tower towards the campus.
Thank you, Mark. Thank you for all the work you're doing to keep the campus beautiful. I want to regress for a minute. I, you know, I mentioned I congratulated the academic side of the house for those two contracts, but you need to know that there's some people working behind the scenes, Dr. Carter's folks, and namely Ted Gonzalez, who helps formulate- who helps formulate those contracts and makes things happen behind the scenes. So, just so you know, thank you. Thank you. And that's it, sir.
Thanks, Zach. Item number five on our agenda is discuss the set of approval of February 2023 interim financial statement investment report. Mr. Liberty?
Yes, sir. You all should have a copy of the February financial statements. I want to start out by letting you know, as you know, Doug is transitioning into my position. So, it was almost like I was a faculty member for a minute. I had Doug run financial statements, and I ran my own financial statements. And let's see if they look the same. And within a couple of pennies, we were, we were right on. So, all confidence in the fact that Doug's going to be able to present the numbers exactly the way I've always presented them, which is the way the auditors have always liked them. So, that's probably a good thing. So, first thing to know is that these numbers are, I actually used Doug's work papers to put these numbers together. So, everything is good on that end. If you look at them, we're very similar to where we have been the last several months. And you can see that the current year versus the previous year, your two outside columns, the bottom line is about $350,000 difference between last fiscal year and this fiscal year. But I'll share a few things there to kind of put that into perspective. I know you had a discussion at the workshop last week from Dr. Welsh, where she shared with you how enrollments have been declining. So, our tuition revenue for the year is down $780,000. And our salaries and benefit expenses are up $800,000 from last year to this year. So, you put those two together, that's a million and a half dollars. And you say, hang on, Bob, you're only $350,000 difference. What's the difference? Well, the difference is that everyone else that works at the institution has continued to do what we've said we've been doing for the last several years, which is to be good financial stewards and to assure that we're only spending those dollars where they're necessary. So, if you take those pieces out of the pie, all the expenditures are actually down from last fiscal year, a little over a million dollars, which gets us at the difference between those two. So, I think everybody from top to bottom needs to be thanked for that because it starts at the department level and works its way up. So, we will continue to try to be as fiscally responsible as we can. And at the same time, keep working to figure out, as Mr. Kirchner had put up there, the new initiatives with Kubota, you know? Every 15 or 20 students that come in for every department, that adds to numbers to the bottom line. So, that's where we're going. So, the financial picture, I think it's where we thought it would be. So, I think it's not necessarily disappointing that we are down from last fiscal year because we planned to be down because of the pay raises that we gave to our employees. So, I can answer any questions. Move leader, approve the report.
Motion made and second to approve interim financial statement report February 2023. Any discussion on that motion? All those favor the motion, say aye. Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Liberty. Item number six is discuss and consider approval of the exercise of the first option year of the contract with Impact Fire Services LLC for the fire alarm and suspension system service for the period of June 1st, 2023 to 31 May 2024. The amount not exceed $250,000. Mr. Harmson?
Yes, as we discussed at the workshop, we are looking to go ahead and extend the option period one for Impact Fire Services. It lists a little bit of information on what we use on an annual basis with Impact Fire. So, with that overall spend, as you mentioned, is not to exceed $250,000. So, recommend approval on extending this option period one.
Move the report.
Second.
Motion made and second to approve the extension of Impact Fire Services for one year. Any discussion on that motion? All those favor the motion, say aye. Motion carries. And while you're there, Mr. Harmson, let's discuss and consider approval of the exercise of the fourth and final option year contract for architectural and engineering services with PBK for the period of April 1st, 2023 through March 31st, 2024. In the amount not exceed $600,000.
Yeah, so this is the final option period for PBK. They are the architects and engineering company for the college. This, later this fall, will be looking to issue another request for qualifications. The, the one thing I just wanted to go ahead and remind the board that if there's a particular project that we have PBK actively working on, it only makes sense to go ahead and continue to utilize them through the duration of the project. Any new request for additional services, once the contract ends, which would be next March, would go to whoever the new architectural firm or engineering firm is at that time. So, with that, we would recommend the approval to move forward with the option period four.
Any questions, Mr. Harmson? I'm sorry, Mr. Biddy. Mr. Biddy made a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made and second to approve the exercise of the fourth option period with PBK. Any discussion on that motion? All those favor the motion, say aye. Motion carries. Thank you, sir. Item number eight is discuss the set of approval to change of the vendor name Christian Tremere to Andreas Mueller for the current contract of $50,000 listed for fiscal year 2022, 2023. Mr. Gonzalez?
Yes, sir. Good afternoon, Board of Trustees, East Chancery Annapolis. I'm here to seek board approval to change the vendor name Christian Tremere to Andreas Mueller on the current 50K list for FY 2223. The service remains the same, as well as the currently approved BPO amounts. This is just a request to update the vendor name. I'm happy to answer any questions, Bob.
What services?
This is actually the person who provides the lease to our, your headquarters.
You probably said that.
Before we move on, do we have a second for that motion?
Second.
Now, we're having a discussion on the motion.
I got my answer.
All those favor the motion, say aye. Motion carries. Item number nine is discuss the set of approval to enter into an interlocal agreement with the City of Colleen Tax Reinvestment Zone, number two.
I was sure you were going to preface it with anything. All right. We currently have an interlocal agreement with the City of Colleen for the tax increment reinvestment zone, in which there's about 300 acres. We signed an interlocal agreement back in 2009 or so, I think it was. And so, we agreed that we would donate all tax revenue back to the city for the development of that property. During a recent meeting in which General Weaver is the college's representative, the board agreed to extend the, expand rather, the acreage by about 300 and some odd acres, as well as extend the agreement through 2048 with the same commitment to donate any tax revenue from property, tax, property tax, excuse me, from those, from that, from the development of the various projects scheduled for the 300 and something additional acres. I think I got that correct.
Any question, Ms. Carter?
What's the dollar value of the abatement?
Sorry?
What's the dollar value of the abatement that we're giving?
The additional 300 acres? I did ask Bob if you can give that in the beginning.
All I can tell you, sir, is what we're currently giving up, because there's no way to know what's going to be in the new piece.
That's my question, sir.
Until currently, it runs about between $45,000 and $50,000 annually.
So, at this time, what we're asking is for the board's approval before the City of Colleen can move forward with council approval. What we need to do is get our board to approve the extension of the current interlocal agreement to 2048, as well as the additional 300 and some odd acres and the agreement to donate the tax revenue back to the project.
Any questions about what's involved here?
Why that, is it necessary to have it for that length of time? Didn't you say 48?
Yes.
The 2048 is the new target date for the, the city, what they've requested. I think the current one runs out.
2028.
2028. So, we're extending it to another 24 years.
The piece of property that we sold, which is part of this package?
Yes.
Nothing's happened there since it was purchased? So, is there a plan to provide some people opportunity to take advantage of that abatement?
Well, actually, and General Weaver, you can help me out here. They actually have several projects planned for that space. And so, they've already engaged an architect to look at the space. And they have some, there's some retail that they're looking at. So, yes.
So, where exactly is this again?
Well, it's close. If you take from the east gate at Fort Hood on Ransier and take a pencil and run that all the way down to 38th Street. On both sides of that, probably 300 feet on either side. That's the major part in the town. And then, if you look in the downtown area of Colleen, probably between College Street and 10th Street, from the railroad tracks to Ransier, that area. And then, if you go out to Colleen High School, 38th Street and Ransier, where the old theater used to be, there's some extra land that's just south and west of the old theater that's being incorporated here. And then, the area in the Colleen Industrial Park, which goes right now between the railroad tracks and Ransier and Roy Reynolds Drive. That area is included in this. So, the area that we sold, if you come from Stan Seater Loop to Interstate 14 and 3657, from the airport boundary back to 36, 34, 3456 or Barton Ruth King Boulevard. From that point, better for a billboard south. That area in there is the area that basically we sold, is part of that area. And there was a contract to develop that into an area of retail, multi-purpose housing, and dual-purpose housing, kind of like the domain in Austin. And in 2008, that fell apart due to the recession. Has been a couple of interest in it. Right now, they're working with a company who wants to revisit that area and do that same kind of, right, development. It'd be a mixed area between business and multifamily housing. There's also a trailer park in that area that they're thinking about trying to buy that area out and so they can have a cleaner sweep through there to develop it. But it bumps up against the airport, and we sold it several years ago. It's all in the works. One of the big things they're looking at is trying to get a grocery store in that area because North Colleen has no grocery stores at all now. And there's several movements working in the background, trying to figure out how to do that. It's an ongoing project, and it'll be there for years to come. This is not something unusual in the state of Texas. Other cities have terms for economic development. And what it does is provide infrastructure to a developer incentive to get them to come in and develop the land to its highest and best use. It's in our advantage to do this. If we can get more people here with college-age kids, and that helps us too. Any other questions?
Move the approval. That was very good.
Make motion.
Yes.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion on that motion? All those favor the motion, say aye. Motion carries. Thank you, Dr. Carter. Next item number 10 is discuss the set of approval of the increase of differential tuition from $10 to $15 for the graphics and printing program effective fall of 2023. Dr. Mark?
Thank you. As discussed last week at the workshop, this request is to increase differential tuition rates from $10 to $15 per credit hour for the graphics and printing courses effective in fall of '23. May I answer any questions?
Should move.
Motion made and second to approve the differential increase. All those favor the motion, say aye. Motion carries. Thank you, Dr. Mark. Item number 11 is discuss the set of approval to purchase the playground equipment for the Child Development Center and Playground BOSS in the amount of not to exceed $174,000 funding funded through the Child Care Relief Fund Grant. Dr. Mark?
Yes, as also discussed last week, this is to purchase playground equipment for the Child Development Center. It is from a grant that the college received from the Child Care Relief Fund Grant. And the amount would not exceed that dollar amount of $174,000. Any questions?
Motion made and seconded. Motion made and seconded to approve the expenditure for the Child Care Relief Fund Grant. Any discussion on that motion? All those favor the motion, say aye. Motion carries. Item number 12 is discuss the set of approval of the appointment of election judges and alternate judges for May 6, 2023 Board of Trustees' general election. Ms. Havens?
Yes, the list provided of judges and alternate judges was approved by C of Colleen and KISD. So, I'm bringing it to you for ratification, your approval for the upcoming May 6 election.
Second.
Motion made and second to approve the appointment of election judges and alternate judges for the May 6 election. Any discussion on that motion? All those favor the motion, say aye. Motion carries. Item number 13 is discuss the set of replacement of the chancellor. And with that, I'd like to go into executive session. Board will be close, close, room.
May I say that, goodness, that I'm about to fall? No.
I don't recommend it.
No, sir. I've been here a long time, but I'm continually amazed at what great people and great accomplishments y'all make. We didn't say anything about that when you were giving it. And I wanted this board to be able to say that to you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
The meeting for the Central Texas College. District Board of Trustees, by concession, the executive session was conducted. As a result of that executive session, the following motion is put for the board. The board moves to announce that the finalist for the position of Chancellor of Central Texas College District is Dr. Michelle Cordell. Is there a second to that motion?
Second, sir.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Motion carries. And I will finish up with the, um... Recommendation of topics for upcoming agenda items or announcements by the board members.
Nothing, sir.
After today, I think I'm done.
Okay, I've got one item I'd like to add to the next agenda, and that is a CCC Foundation update.
We'll, uh, probably do that at the workshop, so it doesn't...
Yes, it's a matter of information. There's nothing really to vote on, but you just need to know who we are.
For the, for the workshop.
What's going on in terms of, uh...
All the... Valerie's here and she'll cover it.
Next item is announced, the time and location of the board workshop scheduled for Tuesday, April 18th, 2023, 1:00 p.m. And the board meeting scheduled for Tuesday, April 25th, 2023, at 1:30 p.m. And that movement is due to the Boy Scout Silver Eagle Luncheon, which will be conducted here at Central Texas College at noon on Thursday... On Tuesday, rather, the 25th of April. And, uh, the... I've bought a table for that. The colleges have bought a table and a half, so all of you will have a seat at the table. And if you want to bring a spouse, we need to know that. If you could let, uh... Debbie know that ahead of time, so we can make table cards or whatever is necessary.
Move where, John?
Motion made.
Second?
I heard a second. If you're all in favor of that, vote with your feet.